Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Michael Owen. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapeta. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostol. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, regular scheduled meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Cameron Sapeta?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we just ask you for wisdom, knowledge, guidance for everyone at the board here today and everyone that works for Hillsborough County. We thank you for your protection over everyone in Hillsborough County, Lord, and protect every one of our first responders in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have two proclamations this morning. Both will be presented by Commissioner Cameron Sapeta. So Commissioner, you're recognized.
Today it's a pleasure to present my first proclamation, commendation as a member of the Board of County Commissioners. Would the following individuals please join me at the podium? Dottie Grover Skipper, Chief Deputy Donna Luinski, the Honorable Judge Robert Bowman, Colonel DJ Reyes, Jamie Kent, and Roger Skipper. Good morning to you all and welcome. I'm proud to be a member of the Commission on Human Trafficking and it's immensely important that we continue to raise awareness and combat this horrible crime, which sadly remains an issue on local, national, and global scale. The good news is numerous community leaders such as these who are standing here today have made significant impacts in battling this exploitation and their hard work and accomplishments are phenomenal. It is an honor to present to Ms. Grover Skipper this proclamation declaring January two thousand twenty-three as Human Trafficking Awareness Month. It reads, "Whereas according to the International Labor Organization's two thousand nineteen report, twenty-four point nine million people were impacted by human trafficking worldwide, where sixteen million were exploited for labor trafficking worldwide, where sixteen million exploited, four point eight million were sexually exploited, and four point one million were exploited in state-imposed forced labor. And whereas globally, women account for fifty-six percent of known human trafficking victims and children account for another thirty-one percent, according to the Counter Trafficking Data Collective, and whereas in order to trap vulnerable individuals, human traffickers use a variety of abhorrent methods, including violence, drugs, and manipulation. And whereas according to the National Human Trafficking Resource Center, Florida ranks third in the nation for the number of calls to the National Human Trafficking Hotline, and the Tampa Bay area serves as a hub for trafficking. And whereas the Florida Legislature continues to work diligently to ensure safety and ongoing care for victims and survivors of human trafficking. And whereas Dottie Grover Skipper and her tireless forty years of anti-trafficking advocacy initiatives through the nonprofit organizations of Heart Dance Foundation and No More Foundation has dedicated herself to advocate for men, women, and children who are victims of sexual exploitation and human trafficking. In addition to assisting with enhanced legislative policy, and whereas in partnership with Hillsborough County, Dottie Grover Skipper continues the steadfast mission to increase public awareness of the illicit sex industry, ensure its eradication, and vindicate every individual from the atrocities they have experienced, so they become victors and not victims. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare January two thousand twenty-three as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Hillsborough County and encourages all residents and visitors to be vigilant in identifying and reporting human trafficking, to send a strong message that Florida will not tolerate any form of slavery executed this nineteenth day of January two thousand twenty-three." And thank you for everything you've done, Ms. Grover Skipper. Would you like to say a few words?
If I may, I would love to. I do want to thank the Board of County Commissioners for this tremendous honor, been in the trenches, as it says, for over forty years, fighting so survivors, victims and survivors can have a voice and be productive citizens. I want to thank everyone standing here with me, Mr. Jamie Kent, who is a founder of the No More Foundation, doing incredible work in our county and beyond, and then Colonel DJ Reyes, who is such an advocate for veterans and also for victims and survivors of human trafficking and has been a mentor to me, and standing next to him Judge Robert Bowman, who started the very first sex trafficking court for minors in the Thirteenth Judicial Circuit, who's also become such a good friend and mentor to me. And then, of course, the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office, Chief Deputy Donna Lewinsky, and all that the Sheriff's Office does to fight this horrendous crime. And then last but not least, my husband, Roger Skipper, who has, he is the wind beneath my wings in everything that I do. So thank you, it's an honor. Thank you, Commissioner Sapeta, and just really appreciate your recognition of this, all this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Grover Skipper, for everything you've done. Stand over and have fun. read even more. Would Leandro Mita Sterneman and her family please join me at the podium? Good morning and welcome to you all. As she is known, to her family and friends is a lovely child who has achieved an incredible milestone, and she's only five years old. Without further ado, it is with sincere admiration that I present this commendation to Leon, whose love for reading is something to behold. The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to congratulate Leandro Mita Sterneman for her incredible achievements in the One Thousand Books Before Kindergarten campaign. Further illustrating the importance of literacy and its impact on the community's children. A precious five-year-old native of St. Louis, Missouri, Leandro Mita, or Leon, to her friends and family, infuses her infectious compassion and generosity with her love for pursuing numerous interests. In addition to participating in sports such as gymnastics and tennis, Leon enjoys Legos, family games, riding horses, playing street hockey with neighborhood friends, coloring, crafting, and puzzles, perfectly balancing her physical and intellectual growth and development. Most significantly, she loves to read books of all kinds, each and every day, pop-up, nonfiction, and leveled, and five-minute readers, there isn't a book Leon won't read. Her passion led her to become a participant in the One Thousand Books Before Kindergarten Campaign, a nonprofit group that partners with participating local libraries to encourage literacy in young children, ranging from infants to toddlers. Leon has completed the campaign three times, reading one thousand books in St. Louis and two thousand books in Apollo Beach, a testament to her dedication and passion for the written word. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend Leandro Mita Sterneman for her amazing accomplishments in the One Thousand Books Before Kindergarten Campaign and wishes her the best in her promising and exciting future, awarded this nineteenth day of January two thousand twenty-three. Way to go, Leon. Leon, would you like to say a few words? Would you like to say a few words?
I would just like to say we are absolutely humbled by this opportunity. We want to thank Hillsborough County along with, and specifically, the South Shore Library for their support and engagement over the past few years, and we look forward to continuing our weekly stops at the library and gaining as much knowledge and education as possible. Thank you.
I just have a quick question. What's your favorite book?
Everyone.
All of them? Awesome.
And hold on one thing, one second, Commissioner, I think, and believe Commissioner Owen wants to make a comment.
I just want to recognize some people that mean a lot to me. Dottie, welcome. Sorry about the Miami Dolphins over the weekend. Many of you don't know, she was a Miami Dolphins cheerleader back in the day, so, but what she does in the state of Florida and really for the whole country for human trafficking, it really is hard to just give you an award. You deserve so much more. We know you want nothing, but I'd like to see a human trafficking court here in Tampa. I think that's something that we as a commission and a body should look into to try to pursue. Judge Bowman, you've been a hero to me on the bench as long as I practice law, but it's what you've done outside of the bench, I think, that really, really defines you. And you're a pretty good golfer, too. And Colonel Reyes, from any of you know, the Veterans Treatment Court, what he does is the time that he puts into that, you're a superhero, Colonel. That's the only way I look at you. So thank you to all of you all that are involved here. This is a big month, but you know, the state of Florida, it's a stain. Anywhere we have sporting events or places where you have great weather, you have human trafficking problems. In Florida, we're at the top of that list, so I appreciate you soldiers, the No Foundation as well. I really enjoy coming out to all of your events. I will continue to support you, but thank you for all you do and God bless you all. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Owen. Bonnie, want to review the changes to the agenda?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, Commissioners. We have one item that has been moved from consent to the regular agenda. It was A-16 is now Item B-8. It is to approve the second modification to the agreement between Hillsborough County and the Tampa Bay Convention and Visitors Bureau for enhanced destination marketing. We have Item B-3 at ten a.m. This is to approve an interlocal agreement between Hillsborough County and the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office for the Falkenburg Jail Maintenance Capital Improvement Project. Item E-1 at ten fifteen is a special appearance by John Flanagan of Career Source Tampa Bay to present their biannual activity report. Eleven forty-five is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Can we have a motion for the changes?
Move the changes.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Kemp. No comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, we'll now go into the public comment portion of the agenda. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern, or your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the board members. However, as requested, at the same time when you address the board, the comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issues. It provides a mutual respect between the board members and the public. The Board has set aside a forty-five minute period in the morning for public comments at the discretion of the Chair. The Board may begin here, public comment at the end of the meeting. When addressing the board, please state your name and speak clearly. We allow up to three minutes for each speaker. I will tell you, we have, I believe, twenty-five speakers that have signed up this morning. If everyone takes full three minutes, we will not be able to get to everyone, so I would encourage you to be brief as possible. There, all the comments are on two issues, B-4 and A-15. I do want to make one comment with respect to A-15. That's regarding the retail sales ordinance to prohibit the sale of rabbits. I think there was some misinformation that might have been sent out. The Board's not having a discussion on that today. We're not voting on that or approving anything today. We're simply setting the public hearing for February first. That would really be the best time to share your comments and support or any changes on the issue. By all means, you're more than welcome to speak today, but I think there may have been some misinformation, so we're not approving that item today. That'll be on the, we'll discuss it during the public hearing on February first. So with that, we have the first three speakers are Lee Barks, and then I believe Suzanne House is virtual, and then Ashawn Wilson.
Good morning. My name is Lee Barks. I'm a member of Palmasia Presbyterian Church, a member congregation of Hope, the Hillsborough Organization for Progress and Equality. Hope, a community organization comprised of twenty-four diverse congregations throughout Hillsborough County, has heard thousands of stories about the need for affordable housing here over the last decade. So I come this morning to speak to you, our county commissioners, regarding Agenda Item B-4 of Procurement Services Regarding Affordable Housing. I speak in support of the recommendations from staff to invest in housing that is affordable for families, working adults, and seniors with low and very low incomes. Recently in my neighborhood, a server in a local restaurant told that their roommate had left them with the total cost of housing and utilities. They were facing homelessness and living in their car. How would this person continue to bathe, dress, report for work, and pay taxes under these circumstances? If this is the fate of many people in the service sector in Hillsborough County, who will be left to serve those of us patronizing our businesses? I know another person who is retired and has been struggling for several months to find affordable housing in retirement. It is unthinkable to them that they, a middle-class person who has worked all of their life, could be homeless. A woman known to me recently reported that her rent has increased forty percent in the last year. If this region drives out everyone in low-income service sector jobs, there will be no one left to serve. And for every one million dollars used to create more affordable housing, one hundred and fifty-eight jobs are created. This is not a handout, it's a hand up. I urge Commissioners to preserve the quality of life in this county that has been such an attractive factor in the region's commercial success by using the Hope Fund as well as state and federal funds to create more housing that is affordable for families, working adults, and seniors with low and very low incomes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barks. Next speakers, Suzanne House. Are you, are you virtual, Ms. House?
Yes, I am.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Suzanne House. I live in Tampa. I'm also on the Board of Florida Voices for Animals, and I'm calling about the rabbit ban. In two thousand twenty-two, the SPCA in Pinellas took in three hundred and forty-five rabbits. The Humane Society of Tampa Bay took in two hundred and seventy-two. That's six hundred and seventeen right there. The Humane Society turned away almost one hundred. Rescues like the Sun Coast, the Space Coast, Gainesville, Orlando, South Florida, East Coast, and the vets, they took in approximately six hundred. That's over twelve hundred rabbits, and there are many more rescues I haven't even mentioned. The vets rescue, they spent at least eighteen thousand dollars on vet bills for these rabbits and over fourteen thousand dollars on spay neuter. I mean, don't you see the problem here? We ask that you please stop the sale of rabbits in retail stores all over Florida. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. House. Ashawn Wilson, followed by Renee Rivard, and then Justin LaRosa. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Ashawn Wilson. I'm the president of Blue Sky Communities with offices at one eighty Fountain Parkway in St. Petersburg. I am here for a couple of different reasons. First, to congratulate the Commission for making a big investment in affordable and workforce and senior housing, and it is an investment, Item B-4 today, and I support that item. Why is it an investment? Because these are upfront dollars that are going to be used for capital, and the private developers and nonprofit developers that are going to build these apartment complexes are bringing a lot of other resources to the table. So your funds are being leveraged, and the underwriting is done, which the county staff verifies, such that you don't need to put money in year after year. It's one time, it's an investment, and it pays dividends to the community over decades. So I want to congratulate you and congratulate staff, and I do want to recognize that a lot of work goes into just getting to the point where we are on Item B-4. A lot of work is done by Ms. Howe, by Yasiya, Mr. Witty, Mr. Johnson, Ms. Hollinger, Ms. Primus, Mr. Sigara, and another staff, and they really, they're really coming into their own and doing a great job with the new funds that are available, and I just want to recognize their efforts and congratulate, and of course, thank you very much for the staff for the recommendation for Casa de Francesco, which is a development that Blue Sky is going to be building in the Mango area in a partnership with the Church of Saint Francis of Assisi, part of the Catholic Diocese. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Next speakers, Renee Rivard, followed by Justin LaRosa and Susan Hall. Is Ms. Rivard here? Okay. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Renee Rivard, PO Box eighty-one Cortez, Florida, three four two one five. Last year, two thousand twenty-two, the Humane Society in Tampa took in two hundred and seventy-two rabbits and had to turn away almost a hundred more because they did not have the space for them. In the last three years, the Humane Society has taken in almost seven hundred unwanted rabbits. The SPCA in Pinellas County has taken in over nine hundred rabbits in the last three years. That's sixteen hundred documented unwanted rabbits between the two nonprofits. Yesterday, the problem of unwanted rabbits is happening all across the state. Yesterday Nassau County Commissioners decided to move forward with a retail ban on the sale of rabbits, and I am sure more municipalities in Florida will do the same now that this problem has finally come to light. Please move forward with the retail rabbit ban to help your partners who are overwhelmed and financially burdened with unwanted pet rabbits. Thank you for your time and thank you to the staff for all of their hard work. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Rivard. Justin LaRosa? Good morning, sir.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the new Commissioners. Congratulations on your election. My name is Justin LaRosa. I'm one of the ministers of High Park United Methodist, right down the road and also at the Portico, which is right down on Florida Avenue. And we, I'm here to support B-4, representative of Hope, Hillsborough Organization for Progress and Equality. And I could give you all the bullet points, but I'm just gonna say Tampa's a great place to live, and it's one of those places that's coming on the map that everybody wants to come to, and that's a beautiful and amazing thing. But one of the shadow parts of that is that the poor often get forgotten. And for six years, we advocated very robustly about getting the, this fund, the Hope Affordable Housing Fund established, and you all unanimously voted for that, and we thank you for that. It's making a big difference. But there's more to be done. We need to get more funds. I want to tell you about a guy who is a senior, sixty-nine years old. He was living outside the Portico for about a year. He couldn't get on any senior housing lists and literally lived outside, was robbed many times at sixty-nine years old. We did get him off the street, and the Portico Housing Solutions, he's doing well today, but it took time, and he's still on a waiting list to get into senior housing. We've got to do more, friends, because great cities, they absolutely care for those on the edges. So let's do it together, let's keep working together. Thanks for your support.
Thank you, sir. Susan Hall, followed by Steve Jensen.
Did you call me?
Susan Hall?
I'm Susan Hall.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, everyone. Public speaking is not my strong suit. Thank you so much for consideration of the retail sales ban on rabbits. I'm a volunteer with Sun Coast House Rabbit Rescue. I personally housed fourteen rabbits. Those rabbits came to me because people bought them for children from pet stores and what have you, and then the responsibility fell on the parents, people become bored, and they, they don't care for the rabbits properly, and then they cut them loose. And then you've got a breeding pair of rabbits out in the woods doing what rabbits do best, and the next thing you know, we have feral colonies of up to forty-five or fifty. That's where I came in. Not a week goes by that I don't get tagged in a Facebook post, a Missing Pets post, Instagram, to help go and capture a rabbit or two or three that have been dumped, and it's not fair to the rabbits. This is all an easily fixable problem. If you ban the sale of rabbits, then we can continue to do what we do best and make sure that people who choose to adopt rabbits get the education they need to care for them properly, have the rabbits spayed or neutered, so we don't have surprise litters that cost a whole lot of money, and we can help them. It's only right that somebody speak up for the bunnies. I'm speaking up for the bunnies today, and I beg you to please pass this ban so I can keep doing what I do. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. I hope I haven't taken up too much.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. You did a great job. Steve Jensen, followed by Robert Boyle U, virtual, and I apologize, I'm sure I butchered your name. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Good morning to you all. This is new for me, not something I typically do, so as a veteran, I first want to say thank you for your public service. I really mean that. I'm going to speak up for the bunnies as well. I liked her language, by the way. I'm an owner of a rabbit myself. Flemish giant, if you want to Google that, you'll find they're about the size of a dog. Anyway, I'm actually with Pet Supermarket, and so people's like, wow, you know, what are you going to talk about, bunnies? I put some comments together because I do take this really seriously. I lead our retail business in all of our stores, and we're based here in Florida. Pet Supermarket takes the responsibility of pet ownership very, very seriously. We're committed to their lifelong health and well-being of all animals, not just rabbits, but all the animals that we sell. Our associates are trained to help customers determine if a rabbit is the right companion for them and answer questions they may have regarding this very important decision. And again, this isn't just rabbits, it's all the pets that we sell, because they're not right for everybody. But the health and well-being of these animals is truly among our best interests as well, because otherwise, we just get them back. And if you think about it in very practical terms, returns, they're just going to come back to us and be back to us, and people are going to, as I hear other people talking about, we don't want them dumped either. It's not what we're there for. To this extent, we not only work with small family farms, which are subject to USDA and private auditors, they ensure strict adherence to animal care standards, but we also provide online and in-store materials to help customers adjust to full-time pet parenthood. We have what's called Pet Owner Guides, and we update these constantly. We have a Pet Owner Guide for Caring for Rabbits. It's on our website. I would invite anybody to please look at that and encourage your friends and neighbors to look at those before they make a purchase of any pet because we have them for all pets. We have links to essential products and accessories. We have inline capability, in-store pickup, we can delivery. These are just the retail pieces of this. The financial impact of this is pretty significant. It really is. It's hundreds of thousands of dollars just in this county. And one might say, well, that's your bottom-line profitability. It goes beyond that. We partner with rescues like the people that have been speaking and hundreds of others every single month in every single store to rehome animals. And the third Saturday of every single month, you're more than welcome to come into one of our stores and see what we're doing along with our rescue partners to rehome pets and animals across all of our stores. The seven locations that we have, and again, we're Florida-based, we're not one of the big pet conglomerates, but the seven locations that we have here in Hillsborough County, the significant losses would have implications, again, beyond our bottom lines. We wouldn't be able to donate hundreds of thousands of dollars that we do.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Appreciate your comments.
We obviously want to make sure that this
Thank you, sir.
doesn't go through.
Next speaker is virtual, Robert Boyle U.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Sorry about butchering your last name.
Robert Foilo. Okay, thank you. My name is Robert Foilo, a member of Unitarian Universalist Church of Tampa, a member of Congregation of HOPE, and you've already heard others speak of HOPE. Therefore, I'll skip that part and just say I came to speak this morning to you as our County Commissioners in support of recommendations from your staff to fund affordable housing for low and very low-income families. Because of the need for affordable housing for six years, from 2013 to 2019, HOPE consistently asked County Commissioners to show leadership by passing an ordinance to establish a local affordable housing fund of at least $10 million annually to create and rehab quality housing that was affordable for families with very low incomes. In September 2019, the Commissioners unanimously voted to pass the HOPE Affordable Housing Act. Actually, Commissioner Miller, the chair at the time, named it the HOPE Act, establishing the Affordable Housing Fund to tackle the housing crisis faced by families in our county. Since 2019, the HOPE Fund has helped create at least 624 more units of affordable housing, and we want to see these funds continue to be approved to create more housing opportunities in 2023. This is important to me because my UU principals call me to support such efforts and for the many stories I've heard from people over the years directly affected by the lack of affordable housing. Thank you for your time and congratulations on your recent election.
Thank you, sir. Next speakers, Zunia Schwartz is also virtual. Hope I pronounced that right.
Hey, good morning. My name is Zunia Schwartz. I'm with Sun Coast Health Rabbit Rescue in Holiday, Florida, from Pasco County. I would like to thank the Commissioners for considering the ordinance to ban the sale of rabbits in pet stores. This ordinance is very important as the only municipal shelter in the county only takes in dogs and cats, leaving the issue of unwanted and the ban on rabbits up to private nonprofit organizations. You've already heard how much money has been spent on the care of rabbits before. I believe the ordinance is well-written and provides the necessary exemptions for FFA, for age, and other agricultural uses. Rabbits are a low-profit margin item. I wouldn't be surprised if I was told that the cost to care for rabbits in the store is close to the purchase price. So I would like to thank you for taking up this issue and encourage you to approve the ordinance as it was written so we can move to the public hearing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Schwartz. Next speaker is Curtis Marsh, is also virtual.
Morning. My name is Curtis Marsh. I am president of Sun Coast Health Rabbit Rescue, and not to repeat any other point that's brought up, but just yesterday, I spent an hour on the phone with the young ladies who had bought a rabbit from Pet Supermarket. She took the rabbit to the vet. Two weeks after she purchased it, the vet was unable to sex it. When she bought it in the store, they did not know the sex of the rabbit. That is the problem with the retail sale of rabbits. I ask you, any of you, to go do your own research, walk into a pet store, ask them to sex the rabbit, or tell you what actual breed it is. The problem with pet stores, they sell the rabbits, they are too young to sex. A rabbit needs to be eight to 10 weeks before you can confidently sex a rabbit, and this leads to problems where people, they know that rabbits should be in pairs, so they buy two rabbits, and they're told they're two girls, and then four months later, they called me, and they want us to take in their seven rabbits that they have now. Or if it's six months, then they want us to take in the 12 rabbits they have. We've handled one to two of these calls a month for the last year. So please consider, and we'll obviously address this again, but please consider banning the retail sale of rabbits. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Sheila Simmons Tribble, also virtual.
Good morning. My name is Sheila Simmons Tribble, a member of Bible-Based Fellowship Church, a member of Congregation of HOPE, a community organization that is comprised of 24 diverse congregations throughout the county. And as some of my friends have said, we have heard thousands of stories about the need for affordable housing over the past 10 years. I'd like to share that according to Schimberg Center at the University of Florida Housing Data, 77,000 families with low and very low incomes in Hillsborough County are paying over 50% of their income on housing. And this has been a problem for many of our low and very low-income families, and particularly those with children. And what I'd like to share is that a few years ago, at least a year ago, I've visited stable place apartments, spoke with families, and heard their pride stories of having safe and beautiful places to raise their children. And we also saw the excitement of the university area residents at the groundbreaking of ceremonies of Uptown Sky, and many of these residents were asking to be put on the waiting list because they really need affordable housing. This fund, the HOPE Fund, is giving hope to families and children in Hillsborough County. I come today in support of the recommendation to use the HOPE Fund as well as state and federal funds to create more housing that is affordable for families and seniors with low and very low incomes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Derek Crystal, which is virtual, and then followed by Gigi Van Doren.
Hi there. Hi, Commissioners. My name's Derek Crystal. I'm calling for a full support of the retail sale ban of rabbits in pet stores, flea markets, roadside, et cetera. There's no shortage. Unfortunately, rabbits are readily available at many local pet stores and for cheap. Minimal information on care. As previously mentioned, animals sold at pet stores are often ill, haven't been spayed or neutered, and are frequently sexed incorrectly, meaning you think you're taking home two females, but you've got a male and a female. Once the litter arrives, people realize it's not more than they can handle, and then they seek out shelters that accepts rabbits, but the shelters are already inundated with rabbits, so they're placed on a waiting list and more often turned loose into the wild. That's because rabbits cannot survive in the wild. Please help not only the animals, but your fellow residents, shelters, and rescue groups. Departments like the USDA just don't provide the protection needed for the retail sale of animals, and they often suffer because of it. Together, we can improve the situation with the start of a ban. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next three speakers are Gigi Van Doren, followed by Antoinette Davis and Ladisha Brown. Good morning.
Good morning, County Commissioners, and congratulations on your election. My name is Gigi Van Doren, and I am a member of the Unitarian Universalist Church of Tampa, a resident of Tampa, and a representative from HOPE. I have been a long-term volunteer with HOPE, and I wasn't going to speak today because I think you understand what the HOPE does, but I had a personal experience that really shook me, and I wanted to share it with you because I think it points out the problem. I have a son who's been a terrific carpenter in this community, and he has worked on some of your homes. He has cancer, and this last year, he's undergone 120 radiation treatments, and he's awaiting enough strength to go through surgery. He doesn't have income at this point, though he has had good income in the past. With $10,000 deductible insurance, his reserves are gone. Saturday, he woke up to his landlord at his door saying that the house was going to be sold and demolished to put in a big fancy home in this neighborhood. So he's now facing homelessness. With tears in his eyes, he tells me, how am I going to find a place near Moffitt that I can afford? How am I going to survive this situation? He doesn't even have the strength to move. I share this with you because I believe that there are people out here who think that people are poor because they did something wrong. We need to support the poor in our community with reasonable housing, and I'm here to ask you to continue to support the HOPE Fund and state and federal funds to make affordable housing accessible in Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van Doren. Antoinette Davis, followed by Ladisha Brown and Reverend Jack Copas. Good morning, Ms. Davis.
Good morning, and congratulations to the new board members. And I applaud your courage to do the difficult work to serve our county. I am Antoinette Davis, the Director of Justice Ministry of Bible-Based Fellowship Church and a member of HOPE. We are an organization that prides ourselves in listening to our congregants. So for the last 10 years, our churches have heard stories of thousands telling for the need of affordable housing. I personally have overseen and organized gatherings where over 500 people have told stories that are heartbreaking, such as the one that we just heard. So I'm compelled to be here today to ask the board to support the recommendations from the staff to fund the creation of more affordable housing. In the church, we have a saying, "Hide me behind the cross." So in that same vein, I want to ask this board to use your imagination as I hide myself behind the thousands of people in our county, from New Tampa to South Tampa, from West Chase to Plant City, from Odessa to Ruskin, and all between. We have heard stories from moms, dads, those with disabilities, the elderly, and our precious children are being impacted by the crisis that we have in our county regarding housing. So as a mom of seven, I can tell you that housing is fundamental to a child's need to grow and thrive. We are a blessed county when we care for those who are in need. But investing in affordable housing is not only the right thing to do, given the crisis that we have in our county, it is smart growth. According to the Federal House Loan Bank, every $1 of funding invested in affordable housing creates $24.60 of additional economic impact in our community. Please support the recommendations to create more affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Ladisha Brown, followed by Reverend Jack Copas and Miriam Parham. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm nervous, you guys. I don't normally do this. My name is Ladisha Brown. I'm a citizen of Hillsborough County. I live in the 33605 zip code. I'm here today with HOPE to support the affordable housing recommendations. 134,400 families with low and very low incomes in Hillsborough are paying over 30% of income in housing. This is important to me because as a single mother of three children, I find myself very ambitious, but it is hard when rent and inflation and gas prices look ridiculous, and I'm trying to focus on a career while changing a baby with a diaper rash, working on a car that is fully mined but breaking down, and car maintenance is apparently important, and so is toilet paper. So these expenses, the little expenses, as small as they seem, can become very overwhelming and frustrating. In the current moment, me and my three children are homeless, and the process of looking for housing, but a lot comes into play when you're looking at a budget and you're trying to maintain staying above water, if that's the easiest way to put it. I find myself often comforting my four-year-old, who's turning five, and he's realizing that without a home, he doesn't have his personal space, and it's kind of hard, you know, keeping him up mentally and emotionally. So affordable housing is something that I myself am here to support and speak for. Again, I want to say thank you, guys, for the opportunity and congratulations on your election.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Reverend Jack Copas, Miriam Parham, and then Anne Marie Cantio. Good morning, sir.
My name is Reverend Jack Copas, and I'm the pastor of the Unitarian Universalist Church of Tampa. I want to thank you for the affordable parking outside that allowed me to get here at the time that I could. I know it's hard to listen to everybody's plea because you get so much input, but I stopped at a real estate agent when I was elected to be the pastor, and I asked for a house with two bedrooms, maybe, and a garage and maybe a driveway for about $150,000, and she said, "Are you serious? There's no such thing as that around anymore?" That was maybe 10 years ago or whatever. Then I began to talk to some of the church people, and they said that there's something being considered by the Commissioners for $10.5 million. And I said, "Really? They would even entertain something like that?" "Yes, indeed." "Why is that?" "Because if you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together. The people who need the housing are equally as important as the people who have the housing." And so my appeal to you, and I hope that it's possible, is to appeal to the angels of your better nature, that when you approve such a thing, when you say yes to such a thing as helping people with affordable housing, that is a statement of honor and a badge of courage. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Miriam Parham, Anne Marie Cantio, and Teresa Roberson. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, and welcome to the new ones. My name is Miriam Parham, and I'm here about the My name is Miriam Parham, and I'm here about the ordinance that you're going to consider February the first, and I thank you for that and that you're looking at the Pasco County ordinance that's passed. Today, I represent Florida Voices for Animals, an all-volunteer nonprofit organization with over 4,600 supporters in the area, and our mission is to educate the public about animal abuse and exploitation. And selling rabbits does contribute to animal abuse and exploitation through the entire process, beginning with the breeders, transportation, retail sales, and ultimately in the hands of often well-meaning consumers. And many out-of-state breeders cause a lot of suffering due to the multiple breedings, the conditions, and the fact that they could be sending viruses over here to our wild rabbit population. And I'm sure you can imagine how stressful transport is for many of these rabbits, and they usually are packed in small cages, just like about any animal who's transported for sales of any kind. This is a life commitment, and people need to understand the big issue is animals that are very stressed, like rabbits, and don't like to be handled, picked up, often are injured and even killed at the hands of, you know, kids who don't know how to handle them well. And they can scratch and bite these kids when stressed, and if, you know, stressed enough, they can bite hard. They chew everything in sight. You've probably heard all these things. They can get sick easily, and it's not easily identifiable, usually until it's too late. And when people get tired of all the work and realize, you know, the novelty has worn off, they're not like dogs and cats. They're often dumped, as you've heard, and the options are limited for the shelters and the sanctuaries. And many out there that are dumped die prematurely from the stress, the extreme temperatures, and from being attacked or mauled or savagely killed by dogs and wild animals. So, as we've said, the shelters are overwhelmed, so there are few options when people, you know, get tired of taking care of these animals they bought impulsively for their kids. They're not toys, but they end up being gifts as toys at Easter, Christmas, and other times. So, I plead and join the group to ask that you consider this ordinance carefully, and we so appreciatively that you're looking at Pasco County, which many of us have helped with that, and helping to make this a more humane county as well, and easing the burden financially and otherwise to others who have to deal with the poor rabbits. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Parham. Next three speakers, Anne Marie Cantio, Teresa Roberson, and Rashima McCoy. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm also here to talk about the rabbit retail ban. One minute. My name is Anne Marie Cantio. I reside at 17802 Ridgeway Court in Tampa. And as a quick background, I have been involved in cat rescue in Hillsborough and Pasco for 10 years with our pet charity partners at PetSmart and PetCo. I have personally spent many a night getting up every three to four hours to bottle-feed motherless neonatal kittens abandoned in the county. While this doesn't necessarily qualify me to speak about the problem of abandoned rabbits, it does provide me with a lot of sympathy for the Humane Society of Tampa Bay, Suncoast Rabbits, SPCA in Pinellas County, and other rabbit rescues here and throughout the state who spend their time as well as personal fortune to rescue, vet, foster, and rehome an ever-increasing number of abandoned and surrendered pet rabbits. Hillsborough County could vastly ease this burden by passing a county ordinance to ban the retail sale of domestic rabbits, the source of all these abandoned rabbits in the first place. Therefore, I encourage the board to follow the recent examples of the states of California, New York, the cities of Las Vegas and Key West, and the Florida counties of Pasco, Orange, and DeSoto, and enact a complete ban on the retail sale of domestic rabbits. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Cantio. Next two speakers, Teresa Roberson, Rashima McCoy. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Teresa Roberson, and I reside in the 33602 zip code, and I was, I'm here to speak on affordable housing. I was just informed about this meeting, so I'm just going to speak from my heart about the issues that I know that exist because, personally, I'm retired now and disabled. I've worked in communities with the old public affordable housing that no longer exists. Many of those places, as we know now, are, they've been redeveloped, and the poor people who used to live in those communities no longer live in those communities, nor can they afford to come back to those communities. Or the affordable housing that is supposed to be set aside for those people, they don't even qualify to come back for whatever particular reasons. But my question now is, what is affordable housing? You know, affordable housing to people who are commuting here from California, New York, and with their six-figure income, 1,400, 1,600 base utilities, fantastic. But for the average working-class person, affordable housing doesn't exist. I personally know many people who are still on the waiting list, who are sleeping on relatives' friends' sofas whenever they can, or they're outside sleeping under bus sheds. So, when we commit to affordable housing, it is my plea to you to at least have housing that is realistically affordable to the average person. I live under subsidized housing myself, and it is a tremendous burden and hardship at times to even maintain the subsidy for the rules and regulations that they put in place and threaten if you don't adhere to them, that you're going to be homeless again. I'm just experiencing this myself, just as we speak now. But it's been resolved because I've been around long enough to know my legal rights and to seek assistance to make sure that my rights aren't violated, and I'm not going to become a homeless citizen, a senior citizen. So, my plea to you is to have real affordable housing.
Thank you, Ms. Roberson. Last three speakers this morning, Rashima McCoy, Dr. James Davison, and Ellsworth Williams. Good morning.
Good morning, and congratulations on your new roles. My name is Rashima McCoy, and I live in 33604 area in Hillsborough County, and I'm coming to speak to you today about affordable housing. Much like what you've already heard is well-needed, and I already know that, me, myself, as a single mother, I just want to share my testimony. As a single mother, 17 years ago, I bought my first home in that same zip code. I'm still there in Sulphur Springs, and I didn't, with just one income, I was able to buy a home. Not only that, because it was a home in an area with a bad reputation, I was able to work with the community to bring it up to a better level than when I first got there. So, when we invest in homeownership, when we invest in creative options for people to keep the homes, it does make a difference in the lives of a lot of family and the community. The program I was on was the Florida Self-Sufficiency Program, and I don't know about the program being around now, but I know there are not a lot of creative options for people. And, you know, me working with the community, I do hear a lot of the hardships of the people, and this really pains me because I have children who are now older now, you know, one I'm still raising, but now the older ones, they're finding it hard to even live in the, not just the community they grew up in, but just in Hillsborough County. I mean, they're young, single men, and, you know, as well as their friends, and they're having to deal with apartments that want them to pay three times the amount of what they bring in, and it's hard, this is terrible to see them suffering, and they want to be on their own, and they're having a hard time. So, I wanted to just appeal to you to make a difference, and whatever you have in your power to do, please help. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. James Davison, and then our last speaker will be Ellsworth Williams. Good morning.
Good morning, board members, and congratulations to the board members who were elected this past November. I'm Jim Davison from New Tampa, and next week is your first transportation workshop. I'm looking forward to seeing the presentation, but I can tell you honestly, I am having a problem looking at the process. I have been doing this for 25 years. I'm coming up on my eighth long-range transportation plan, and it is the same thing. They'll have a transportation workshop. They will tell you how bad it is. They will say that these are the funding options, and it always comes down to a sales tax. That has been the plan for 25 years. You all know the definition of doing something over and over again and expecting a different outcome. Two referendums have been defeated. One has been found unconstitutional. Don't you think it's time that we try something different? Maybe look at it in a different way? So, after the workshop next week, I'm hoping that this board can advise engineering and operations to look at a way to incorporate public input into workshops, to look at changing the process. What are we going to discuss? We have tried the encompassing all sales tax that was going to solve all the problems. Maybe we should look at it and break it up into different municipalities, into different neighborhoods, and find out how the funding can look at it that way. You may want to turn this over to your Citizens Advisory Committee at first before embarking on those public meetings. That's what you have them for. Give them a job. Make them look at how we can change this process of talking about transportation, which is connected to affordable housing. And if you don't solve the transportation planning, you are not going to solve the affordable housing issue. Can't be done. So, I would urge the board to kind of accept these workshops from the staff. They're important, but we have to change the way we start talking about transportation and the way we start to solve our problems. It's been a long day for you guys, so I won't take up any more of your time, but congratulations against to the member, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Last speaker this morning, Ellsworth Williams. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, chairman. I'm excited, and I'm motivated. I'm going to tell you why. I've been in this county about 12 years. This is the first time I spoke to this body. You know why? Because we elected two veterans to the commission. That's making me excited and motivated. In fact, I met the commissioner at that time, candidate Warstall, and he had my utmost respect because he came to the lion's den, and he spread his message. That's important. And then I learned that Dr. Cepeda's Army veteran, "Go Army." And I said, "I got to come out here and introduce myself." I'm glad because now we have a veteran, I think people who will be advocates for veterans. I'm not saying you guys are not, but we need veterans who are part of the board as well. Phew. Okay, so, I'm myself, I'm an Army veteran, spent 24 years in the Army, 18, 24, eight enlisted, 16 commissioned. That means I'm bilingual, so all the guys who are here know what I'm talking about. I'm also the president and CEO of Veterans Council and Veterans. I have other couple more hats as well, but the main thing is, I'm here to take care of our veterans and continue my service. My wife is a retired law enforcement officer, and she's taking care of you guys as kids at Grady Elementary School. So, we're still about servicing veterans. Veterans Council and Veteran is a nonprofit that has five major missions. One, we connect veterans and their families to veterans who are also counselors. Two, we are big-time military sexual assault survivor advocates. Three, we do active suicide prevention, prevention as far as veterans, families, 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 families are very important, people don't realize it, but of the 10,000, of the 100,000 veterans under here, 6% of them have a family. We need to sit there and step up and take care of families because a veteran has PTSD. Guess who gets the first run of it? And if we don't do anything about it, it becomes generational trauma. Finally, we're also part of DEI. You know, we don't just talk about it, we be about it. So, I just want to make sure, again, opportunity to be able to introduce myself to the communities, and I already have a meeting to meet with Commissioner Cepeda. I'm excited to hear about that because we've got a lot of things in common. Thank you for having here, and have a nice day. Thanks.
Thank you, sir, for your comments and service. That closes the public comment portion of the agenda. Can we have a motion to approve the consent? Motion, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Bonnie, want to introduce the first item?
Thank you. The first item is Item B3. This is a 10 o'clock item. This is to approve an interlocal agreement between the county and the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office. This is to provide maintenance and capital improvement projects for the Falkenburg Jail. John Mueller will present this item, and we also have Chief Deputy Donna Lozinski from the Sheriff's Office here as well, who can also answer questions.
Good morning, John.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, chair. John Mueller, Hillsborough County Director of Facilities Management and Real Estate Services. Item B3 is a request for an interlocal with the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office to provide them $10 million in much-needed renovations to the Falkenburg Road jail site. The funding is included in our fiscal year '23 to '27 capital improvement program. The county jail houses inmates in 12 housing units, each unit having four separate pods for a total capacity of 3,333 beds. I mention this to put the size and complexity of this project in perspective. For this reason, staff of both the county and the Sheriff's Office recommend that this project be directly managed by the HCSO, particularly since it will be done in phases within an operating, secure jail site. The 12 housing units were constructed between the years 1998 to 2012. This interlocal will complete a top-to-bottom overhaul of the three oldest housing units to address leaks, old plumbing, windows, and also provide upgraded, modernized workstations for the deputies who work inside each of these pods every day. In addition, the project will provide enhanced screening, which is much-needed at the north entrance of the jail site. The agreement does include language with regards to disadvantaged minority business enterprise and disadvantaged women minority business enterprise. The projects will be advertised with the county MBE office and the state office of supplier diversity. Myself and the HCSO staff are available for any questions you have. As Bonnie mentioned, Chief Lozinski is here, Deputy Chief Lozinski. We also have Kristy Pore, who's the Colonel of the Detention Services, and Steve Mitchell, who's the Director for the Special Projects of HCSO. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Chief Lozinski, do you want to make any comments? Are you? Good morning.
Good morning. I'll just be very brief, but I want to thank the commission for taking the time to consider this request. We've been working closely, as Mr. Mueller said, with his staff, to develop a plan to address our current needs and those we anticipate for the future. As you know, the sheriff takes great pride in how we treat and respect our people, and unfortunately, our detention facilities are getting older and in need of significant repair. So, we want to ensure that the inmates that are housed in those facilities, as well as the 1,100 employees that are in there, that work there every day, are in a safe, functional, and efficient environment. So, we thank you for your consideration and support and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, chief. Do you have any comments, or do we want to entertain a motion? Move for approval?
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Owen, Second Commissioner Cohen. If there are no comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Next item?
Thank you. We still have a few minutes before our 10:15, so we can take the first regular agenda item, which is Item B1. This is to approve the Hillsborough County Public Schools Request for School Impact Fees to Construct Sumner High School. Adam Gormley with Development Services is here to present this item.
Morning, Adam.
Morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, commissioners. Adam Gormley, Development Services Department. Item B1 is a request to disburse $2,582,600 of school impact fee funds at the request of the Hillsborough County School Board to construct, in addition to Sumner High School, to bring the school up to its full 3,000-student capacity. Just brief background on impact fees, school impact fees, these are fees that are assessed by the county and the municipalities to fund replacement capacity that's consumed by new development. The school impact fee funds are a limited funding source, and the only thing that they can be spent on is additional school capacity. With that, I'm available for any questions. Thanks.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yeah, I just, for clarification, we're just basically a pass-through, aren't we?
We are, we are, we have the collection, we are, yes, essentially so. We're collecting the funds, holding them in reserve, and we disburse them to the school district, school board at their request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Owen?
And yes, Commissioner Myers, we share, a lot of our constituents go to this high school. In South County, we just have a real need for places for students, so we are a pass-through, but this is, this is something that's very important to South County, so I'm in full support.
Okay, we got a motion approved, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thanks, Adam. Next item?
Thank you. The next item is Item B2. This is to approve, and this will be by Superintendent. This is to approve, and this will be by supermajority vote, the contract for sale or purchase of real property for the ELAP program. This is in the Triple Creek Ranch Preserve, and I know this is a property that Forest Turberville has been, and the ELAP Committee has been watching for quite some time, and will let Forest Turberville present this item.
Morning, Forrest.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. Forest Turberville Conservation Environmental Lands Management Department. The item before you today has two components. The first is to request your approval of a contract with TC Venture 1 LLC to acquire approximately 110 acres of property located within the boundaries of the Triple Creek Ranch ELAP Preserve for $887,500 using available ELAP bond funds. This negotiated purchase price is approximately 4% higher than the property's average appraised value, and therefore, as Bonnie mentioned, requires approval by supermajority vote. The second component requests your approval of a budget amendment resolution to realign $325,000 within the 2019 ELAP bond to provide for restoration of the property's upland habitats and demolition of any nonessential structures on the property. At the seller's request, the sale closing is contingent upon the seller completing certain conditions related to the permitting of the final phase of the Triple Creek residential development. The seller will have up to 15 months to complete these conditions, and the board is in no way obligated to approve any of the seller's conditions. In addition to the aforementioned acquisition and restoration costs, ELAP bonds will fund up to $75,000 of transactional costs, while ELAP non-bond proceeds will fund up to $50,000 to permanently remove the 110-acre property from the Triple Creek CDD. This particular acquisition represents the last remaining upland wildlife corridor connecting the Triple Creek Ranch Preserve with surrounding ELAP lands. The property's rare sandhill and scrub habitats are home to a number of threatened and endangered species. These include Sherman's fox squirrels, gopher tortoises, indigo snakes, and southeastern American kestrel. And it truly is one of the most beautiful upland sites remaining within central Hillsborough County and really all of Hillsborough County. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Forrest. Questions, comments? Got a motion approved by Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Myers. If no comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Forrest.
Thank you. Our next item is Item B4. This is to award the five highest-ranked proposers the opportunity to provide multifamily development. This is with a variety of funding sources. Scott Stromer with Procurement Services is here to present this item, and Cheryl Howell, Assistant County Administrator, is also here if you have any questions specifically about the affordable housing part.
Morning, Scott.
Good morning. Scott Stromer, Procurement Services. Item B4 is asking the board to award to the five highest-ranked proposers the opportunity to provide multifamily development and/or new construction of rental, homeownership, and acquisition rehabilitation projects for the Affordable Housing Department at a total recommended amount of $23,542,58. The award will include a mix of low and very low-income eligible housing. The recommended housing activities will be funded with a little over $10 million of local government HOPE funding, a little over $12 million of state ship funding, and a little over $93 million of private development funding. The five projects will produce an estimated 395 units of affordable housing. Following approval of the recommended awards, the Affordable Housing Services Department will prepare and submit the necessary agreements to the board for approval and execution. In this case, there was no disadvantaged business enterprise participation goal or small business enterprise set aside on this procurement. The Procurement Services does recommend approval.
Commissioner Kemp?
I'd first like to move approval, and I'll be quick, but I'd just like to thank HOPE for coming down here, as they always do, so dedicated to really bearing witness to what's happening in our community, and we know it's a tremendous, serious need.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to point out, and thanks Cheryl Howell, each board member, each board meeting, we continue to approve affordable housing projects. And I think this is an excellent plus-plus, win-win for the county, that we're not leaving anyone behind. We are constantly funding projects for low-income people. So thank you.
Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to just reiterate what Commissioner Myers just said. We have really taken the long view on this, and at every meeting, we seem to be coming back with additional projects that we're doing to move the ball. And I think what we've seen is that this problem is so massive, and it's so all-encompassing in terms of every corner of the county, every neighborhood, every economic group being affected by it, that the only way that we can make a real difference is by just continuing to figure out creative programs that we can get behind and partner with the private sector, leverage government funding, and I want to compliment the staff again on being so aggressive about this because we hear what people are saying about how difficult it is to afford housing in this community, and, you know, you guys are really out front making it happen. So thank you.
Commissioner Owen?
Yes, and thank you all for all your comments today. My only comment is that I hope that this board and what we're focusing on, I think a few peoples alluded to location. The lady who talked about the story about her son and having access to Moffitt, I think we really need to be careful where we're putting a lot of these projects if they're on unimproved roads or places where there's not public transportation. So I hope we have a real focus on this board on areas that have real access to folks for jobs, public transportation, and whatnot. So I promise I'll be a watchdog for that, and I hope the rest of the Commissioners will too. Thank you.
Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief as usual. And thank you, everybody, sincerely for coming. I am, I'm gonna vote no on this, and I'll give you just a brief insight on why. I factually grew up in a trailer home that was about $20,000, spent most of my time dodging the hole that was under the carpet of my floor. And I'm wondering in staff's analysis, when we, in these recommendations of approval, do we at all consider the irrefutable and statistical fact that when it comes to affordable housing and we continue to spend tax money on this housing, thus making it uneconomical for potentially other people to not afford their current paycheck-to-paycheck situation, which then further moves the bar and increases the threshold of how many people might potentially also need affordable housing? Do we ever consider how we continue to create the dependence of government for these things rather than actually alleviating the fact?
I guess that's you, Cheryl.
Yes, sir. No, sir. We certainly create programs that are a hand-up for people. We're making investments in the community and in individuals and families and in the future of Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Okay. Any other board member comments? Got a motion to approve, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Myers. No other comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner Wostel voted no.
All right. Bonnie?
If possible, if we can get through Scott Stromer's other items real quickly, B5. B5 is to award and execute a two-year agreement for major road resurfacing. And so, Mr. Stromer, if you could continue with that one.
Sure. Item B5 is asking the board to award and execute a two-year agreement with the overall lowest responsible bidder, CW Roberts Contracting Incorporated, for ongoing and as-needed major road resurfacing at various locations throughout the county for the Capital Programs Department at a total cost of just a little over $19 million. And also approve and execute the first modification agreement to revise the contract terms and conditions related to the amount of retainage. It's important to note that this particular award is for major roadways, is in addition to the award previously approved by the board on February 2 of 2022 in the amount of just a little over $37 million, which was for roadway resurfacing improvements in neighborhoods throughout the county. The recommended vendor has committed to meeting the county's construction apprenticeship program requirements and achieving the established disadvantaged business enterprise goal of 10%. With that, Procurement Services does recommend approval.
Have a motion? Move. Motion, Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Cohen. And I just want to take this opportunity, since we're talking about road resurfacing, I'm hopeful that we've got a number of projects that have been approved, and it seems like we've had a delay with some of the contractors in beginning the works. I'm starting to hear from a number of folks in my district, so just a comment if we can try and kick them in the butt to get these projects going as quickly as possible. No other comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
B6?
Thank you. B6 is also Mr. Stromer regarding temporary staffing contracts.
B6 is asking the board to award contracts including a partial small business enterprise set aside to the six respective overall lowest responsible bidders by group for ongoing and as-needed temporary staffing services for the Human Resources Department to support various departments' day-to-day operations at a total cost of just a little over $12 million for a three-year term. Temporary staffing is used to supplement existing staff when necessary due to vacancies, to ensure uninterrupted service delivery, and during storm events, when additional staff is needed for preparation, sheltering, distribution of supplies, and other tasks aimed at protecting residents. In this case, because a portion of the work was approved as a small business enterprise set aside, the disadvantaged business enterprise program requirements do not apply. One of the recommended vendors, Mainzer Management Incorporated, is a Hillsborough County-registered SBE firm. Procurement Services does recommend approval.
Comments, questions? Got a motion to approve, Commissioner Kemp? Second Commissioner Myers? Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you. And if we can now move to Item E1. This is the 10:15 item. This is a special appearance by John Flanagan of Career Source Tampa Bay to present their biannual activity report, and Mr. Flanagan is here virtually.
Mr. Flanagan?
Thank you, Ms. Wise. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Wanted to say quickly, congratulations to Commissioners Cepeda, Wostel, and Owen for their election to the board, and Commissioners Myers, Kemp, Commissioner Kemp, Commissioner Hey, Commissioner Cohen, good to see you all again. My purpose here today is to discuss our biannual activity report for Career Source Tampa Bay, which is the federally identified local workforce development board for Hillsborough County. So if you could please go to slide number two, I just want to discuss some demographic data that kind of identifies our work in Career Source Tampa Bay. So, next slide, please. Unemployment rate in Hillsborough County has dropped precipitously. We are now down to about 2.46%. And we usually go, we usually look at these things on a five-year cycle. We were at about 4% five years ago. We all know what happened in 2020 with the onset of the pandemic. We had a spike, and we've done a very good job as a community of reemploying our people that had lost their jobs through the pandemic. Next slide, please. In the last five years, the county has seen a little bit, almost 45,000 new jobs, outpaces the national growth rate by 4%. In the next five years, we're looking at adding an additional, we're forecast to add an additional 50,000 to 60,000 jobs as well. So the growth is going to continue for the region, particularly in terms of employment. Next slide, please. Wanted to show you this slide as it relates to our labor force participation rate. Hillsborough County has a robust labor force participation rate of almost 70%. We outpace the state and national average by about eight, by about 7.5%, which is pretty profound because that means about 5,000 additional people in a labor force of our size are working and not on, and not on the sidelines or looking for work. So that's really good news. Next slide, please. So this is just a, this is a snapshot of our 21, 22 performance. If you just kind of remember what we talked about in terms of jobs, job unemployment rate and labor force participation rate, you know, our numbers have gone down in terms of people we have served because there are less people to serve, but what we have done is pivot and really worked intently with people that face significant barriers to employment, like offering them occupational skills training, paid work experience, apprenticeship, and on-the-job training, all which help people either gain employment that day or move into employment through occupational skills training. We've served, we served in 21, 22, a little more than 1,600 employers. About 750 of those were returning employers, all pretty good metrics. Our goal is to have about a 3% saturation rate, which means we've got a lot of work to do. We should be working with about 2,500 to 3,000 employers in the region. Next slide, please. Just wanted to share a little bit about, you know, our current year, this year through the first quarter. Numbers, again, are a little bit on a downward trend, but we are seeing continued work in occupational skills training, work experience, apprenticeship opportunities, and on-the-job training. Next slide, please. So in all, and please excuse the typo, it's not Q1 of PY 21, 22. This encompasses the whole last year. We served over 26,000 individuals either in person or registering Employ Florida, the state workforce system of record. We provided direct services to 1,423 employers. 94,000, and more than 94,000 services were provided overall. We fulfilled over 35,000 job orders, new orders were created in Employ Florida, and over 16,000 job referrals were made. Next slide, please. So just reiterating the, our performance so far this year, we've served about almost 6,300 individuals, provided services to 477 employers, provided 25,000 services, and created about almost 5,100 job orders through Employ Florida. Next slide, please. One of the things that the state legislature had done in their last session was created some new workforce legislation called the REACH Act. REACH stands for Reimagining Education and Career Help. The legislation was led by the Speaker of the House at the time, Representative Chris Strauss, and Representative Chris Latval, who is now over in Pinellas County on the Board of County Commissioners. Really what it did was held workforce systems more accountable by, certainly by one metric through letter grade. So they established a criteria for letter grades that really identified, you know, the metrics of helping people increase earnings, reduce public assistance, create good employment and training outcomes, number participants in work-related services, and so on and so on. Our baseline grade for the first year was a 90, about a 90-point, almost a 90.1%, which equated to an A-, ranking us about 10th out of the 24 workforce boards. I will say that we had our first-quarter grade just published Friday after I sent this in. We are, we are performing at high level. We received a grade of 94.07, making us the fourth-highest performing board in the state in front of municipalities like Miami and Lake Jacksonville, slightly trailing Orlando. But it's a testament to the good work of the team at Career Source Tampa Bay, assisting job seekers and employers wherever we can. Next slide, please. So I want to talk about some accomplishments, particularly as it relates to some funding we get directly from the Board of County Commissioners. We'll talk about our key organizational strategic responses. Next slide, please. Focusing on building sector partnerships, so making sure that we provide opportunities in priority industries for all people in Hillsborough County. We'll speak a little bit about the Tampa Bay Summer Hires Program, that is our youth summer employment program. The ability to extend services through participants through virtual services, both job seeker and adult. And finally, our Apprenticeship to Career Expansion, or ACE Program, is actually Apprenticeship to Career Empowerment, please excuse the typo, that was funded through the Board of County Commissioners, most notably by Commissioner Myers. And again, Commissioner Myers, thank you for your vision in that program. Next slide, please. So as we build out a sector partnership and career pathways and talent demand, you know, looking at this, you know, we're focusing on a talent supply of our youth, our low, you know, our low-income residents, the veterans, people returning, returning citizens, dislocated workers, underemployed women and minorities. With the labor force being what it is, and certainly looking at data that tells us that our labor force, particularly in the next 10 to 15 years, is going to continue to constrict, it's really important that we, as a community, really help employers cast a wider net to make sure that everybody can enjoy the economic success of Hillsborough County. So this is kind of the strategy and approach we took. So this is kind of the strategy and approach we took. So focusing on career pathways and targeted career sectors, you know, our most robust pathways that we've identified in Hillsborough County are through business and finance, health sciences, information technology, and skilled trades. And then looking at target industries that where these careers fit into, you know, certainly accommodation in food services, construction, finance and insurance, healthcare and social assistance, manufacturing, professional tech services, and retail trade. So the idea is to increase business engagement and investment in workforce training at the end of the day. So somebody talked about it, and I think it was a person making a public comment, the need to supercharge, you know, dollars that are sent through government entities with investment from the private sector is really critical in making sure that we fill all of our workforce and talent needs going forward. Next slide, please. So just a quick alignment of our current projects and key priorities discussed in the last slide. Next slide, please. Same thing, this was just a bit of a more detailed breakdown. Next slide, please. So our Tampa Bay Summer Hires Program, again, so this is a program that works with youth, with the great partnership with the Hillsborough County Schools, that identifies three program tracks for students age 16 all the way up to 21 to either involve themselves in a paid work experience where we work, they're directly placed with employers, with Career Source Tampa Bay as the employer of record. A virtual career exploration option, it's an online four-week exploration program that allows youth to investigate and review potential careers, culminating in a final project presenting their chosen career while earning incentives for weekly compensation or weekly completion of assignments. And then we have a youth academy identified as Young Leaders Tomorrow, it's a six-week Career Source Tampa Bay-led leadership training for young adults, building responsibility and confidence, enhancing employability. Next slide, please. And our Apprenticeship to Career Empowerment Program, this program is in its third iteration. It was created so that young people in Hillsborough County, age 18 to 29, have resources to connect to a career ladder with future self-sustaining wages, employment security, and training to succeed in all of those high-demand industries that we spoke about before. What ACE does that's unique is pairs classroom training and stackable credentials with work-based training with a Hillsborough employer sponsor to start the youth on their chosen career path for a brighter future. So essentially what that means is there are two days in a classroom, and either two or three days in a classroom, or two or three days on the job, earning a wage, learning about what they're doing with the idea of retention after the program is done. So you'll see in year, next slide, please, I'm sorry, I got these backwards. But in year one, we served 70 adults, 58 completed, and 42 adults had entered employment at that time. And if you could go back up one slide, I apologize for that, that's my fault. If you look at year two, we served 64 young adults, 52 of whom completed the program, 37 of which entered employment at an average wage of 1,551. In year three, we've served 21 adults to date. That program just started, our first two cohorts started. And I will be happy to update you on information the next time I am in front of this body. All right, so next slide, please. I'm certainly not going to ask anybody to play this, but if you have time, please look at some of these online success stories, one through Fox, and then one through YouTube, really talks about the power of the ACE Program and the success that it's had. And again, thank you to Commissioner Myers, and thank you to the Board for your wisdom in allowing us to do this program. Next slide, please. And one of the things I spoke about early in regards to strategic priorities was creating a robust virtual services platform to ensure that everybody can participate in services that Career Source Tampa Bay has to offer, regardless of their ability to enter one of our centers. So with an online connection, either through a cell phone or through a laptop or a tablet, they're able to utilize our services through Career Edge, which essentially provides them assessments, an online orientation, professional development, classes and opportunities, 20-plus Jobseeker Module Toolkit. It's got a great employer engagement feature. As a matter of fact, we use Career Source, or I'm sorry, Career Edge specifically for our employer engagement side on the summer youth program. They can import timesheets and make that a smooth and seamless process. And then provides data and reporting, which tracks participants' progress in real time. We served about an additional 11,000 people that we would not have served before through Career Edge, so it's a great success. Next slide, please. This is essentially some of the workshops and training that are offered through Career Edge. And these services, particularly, I want to make this clear too, these aren't based on eligibility at all. Anybody who is in Hillsborough County can go onto our Career Source Tampa Bay website, register in Career Edge, and have full access to these tools. So it's a fantastic program, again, available to all participants in Hillsborough County. Next slide, please. Another thing we use with virtual services is a tool called Metrics Learning. It provides 5,000 workplace business and IT courses, 10 career pathways, 200 occupations, over 300 skill tracks, and 100 certification and training tracks. The service itself is provided free of charge to participants. We do not cover the cost of certification costs, specifically like testing and things like that, because you would have to be eligible for those services based on a number of factors. But we do provide access to the courses, and if you're eligible for some of our services that are based on eligibility, we'll be able to cover some of those costs for you as well. And that has free digital badging and certificates of completion. Next slide, please. All right, so just wanted to give the Commission a brief update in regards to our budget, how it looks, where we draw our categories, and where we draw some of our.
Mr. Flanagan, I don't want to cut you off, but I need you to bring it in for a landing here quickly. Thank you.
Okay, you bet. Just a quick look at our budget, we are budgeted about $26 million. You know, participant and work-based learning make up about $9 million of that. Salaries and benefits for people that are working in the system, providing services to job seekers, is the next line. Then we've got sub-recipient contracts, we contract some of our services out to a vendor, and operating costs and down the line. Next slide, please. And if you look at revenues by source, significant portion is through Federal Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. And then, next slide, please. Wanted to quickly talk about special grants and programs, what we receive through the county through ACE, which is, you know, just shy of $1 million. And then our targeted workforce sector program, $520,000, some odd thousand dollars. The rest are made up of projects with United Way and some national grants. Next slide, please. Thank you, Commissioners. I hope I didn't take too much time, wanted to give you kind of a detailed update on what we're doing in Career Source Tampa Bay, and would be happy to answer any questions if there are any. Thank you again.
Well, thank you for the presentation, Mr. Flanagan. I know I look forward to serving on your Board and picking up where Commissioner Myers left off with her great work. Any comments or questions for Mr. Flanagan? If not, can we have a motion to accept the report? A motion to accept the report, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Cohen. No comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Right, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. The next item is item B seven. This is to approve a grant with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for the septic-to-sewer conversion. And this is Lisa Ray, who is our new Water Resources Director, and she has now filling the shoes of that role since Beth Chenela's retirement. And also, George Cassidy is here also, if there are any questions. Welcome, Lisa.
Good morning, welcome.
Good morning, good morning. Thank you for having me. My name is Lisa Ray. I am the Director of Water Resources, and I am here to speak on Agenda Item B seven, which is a grant with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection in the amount of $20.35 million. Now, this grant does require matching funds, and we are fortunate to have ARPA money available to create part of that match. So additional $20 million will be coming from the American Rescue Plan Act. The funding will be used for the septic-to-sewer conversion in the Gibsonton area. And as I am sure you know from the Blue Green Algae Task Force, that septic tanks can have a huge impact on the environment. This conversion is going to allow us to improve the services for the residents in the area as well as protect our environment. The work will be created in four phases with the overall budget estimate at this point of $62 million. There is one error that I would like to point out, there's the Scrivener's error in the title block on the attachment to the agenda that has been corrected. So the actual version that will be signed will have the correct information on it. And with that, Water Resources recommends approval of this agenda, and I'm available to answer any questions or provide any additional information.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. This is not the sexiest thing in the world, but it is so important, and it makes such a difference not just in people's lives, but also, as was well said, in our environment. You know, I just want to remind everybody as we do this that every one of these septic tanks that is out there is its own little tiny point waiting to erupt and create major environmental damage. And some of these have been around for years, and it's really, really good that we are able to clean them up because the cost of doing this for private citizens is usually way outside of what's in the budget, and that means they just sit and fester. So I want to move approval of this item.
Second.
Commissioner Kemp.
Yes, and I'd just like to point out the economic development improvements that are allowed when you finally, and we have some 25,000 residential units within the urban service area that do not have opportunity for this. And I've spent many years having communities really just lobby and come for this and spontaneously are very appreciative when it happens. But it can really change the way a community can develop because they are not able to attract businesses that they would want or other opportunities when you don't have your wastewater in sewer system.
Okay, we got a motion to approve, Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Kemp. If no other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Next item.
Thank you. Our next item is item B eight. This is to approve the second modification to the agreement between Hillsborough County and the Tampa Bay Convention and Visitors Bureau. And Ron Barton, Assistant County Administrator, will present this item.
Thank you, Bonnie. Good morning, Commissioners. Ron Barton, Assistant County Administrator for Economic Prosperity. Item B eight actually has two components. The first is a second modification to the agreement with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, sometimes we know them as Visit Tampa Bay. And it's to augment their budget by $5,515,000 to enhance their marketing initiatives for both domestic and international visitors. The second component of the motion is a budget amendment resolution in which we move the $5,515,000 from reserves back into an operating account that is aligned with Visit Tampa Bay. A couple of things that I'd like to point out is this is the tourist development tax. It's a tax on visitors, staying in hotels, bed and breakfasts, and Airbnbs. And so it's an opportunity to use this source to continue to fuel visitation to our market and drive the economy. We have a contract with Visit Tampa Bay. They are our designated DMO, which is a designated marketing organization. So they're the entity that is front and center for our community in marketing to the outside world for visitation. Again, I mentioned it's TDT funds. Essentially, this is a true-up. We have a formula that was endorsed by the TDC and recommended to the Board, a formula based to fund particularly Visit Tampa Bay. 70% of the first three cent is the formula. We budgeted very conservatively because we still weren't sure about COVID and how it would impact the visitor industry. So we budgeted for the period very low. In fact, as you've heard many times, we've done very well in the community. So in fact, if we had taken 70% of what was actual, that in essence is the $5 million that we're moving back to Visit Tampa Bay. So hopefully that helps explain it a little bit. I certainly am here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ron. Commissioner Owen.
Yes, thank you. And this is kind of a creature statute, right? These funds, what we're dealing with is, we exceeded the revenue here, and we're trying to just stay in line. Forgive me, because I got the contract kind of late, and I reviewed the first modification as well this morning. But what in essence we're doing is we're keeping with the same pennies in line with what we already had in the original contract, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's really the only difference, is that we budgeted low for the revenue, things turned out quite a bit better, and now we're, and then the same thing with the other item that was on consent, I think it's, gosh, A28, correct? That's the sixth penny on this one, does that sound right? Does that sound right, Ms. Wise?
Somebody will have to read, A28, I don't have it in front of me.
That was regarding the sixth cent.
That's correct.
Okay, so basically what we're doing is we're just staying in line with the original terms of the contract. The only thing we have different is that there's more revenue, and we want to kind of keep the same terms and layman's terms. Does that sound right?
You are correct.
Okay, good. I'll move for approval.
Commissioner Wolstal.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Barton, the way it was explained to me is that we must legally, by statute, pass this $5 million back to Visit Tampa Bay. But it sounds like it's not because of, is it because of the statute, or is it because of the original contract, which I haven't had an opportunity to read?
It is not because of the statute. We can negotiate who receives the three cents, but we do have guidance that it has to be within certain parameters in the statute, and marketing is one of those. And so we do that by ordinance.
So the 40% that was explained to me that it was governed by statute, again, I'll say that, the 40% that says it must be made whole to them is not a state statute.
Okay, I think I understand what you're asking. So there is guidance in the state statute that a minimum number of the collections of that should go to marketing. And so I think that's what you're referring to. And so we easily meet that number. We've never been underneath that statutory guidance. But yes, sir, that's what you're referring to, is there's some guidance about a minimum number that should be allocated to marketing.
So this $5 million must go back to them because of the 40%?
I can't tell you that that's a true statement, but it goes back to them because that's the agreement that we have with them on the funding of basically the 70% that I talked about of the three cent gets you to the same place that the statute requires.
Okay, so then if it's not the case, then I'm very concerned, because that was specifically what I was told, that this $5 million must go back to them by state statute to meet the 40%. So that's interesting to find out. Have we ever shopped this? I know we shop a lot of contracts. Have we ever reshopped this contract for this specific function? Or is it just by state statute that we must keep this one organization?
No, the statute does not guide the agency, and this entity in one form or another has been our DMO for years and years and years. And so the answer is no, we haven't shopped it.
Interesting.
Because it's typically the Convention and Visitors Bureau in an entity, so the Orlando Convention and Visitors Bureau is the DMO for Orange County, Jacksonville Convention and Visitors Bureau is the DMO for Duval County, same here. Our Convention and Visitors Bureau is our designated DMO.
Okay.
By the way, I will get back with you specifically about your question on the 40%.
I'll do a second.
Just a couple of quick questions, because I sit on the TDC, and I'll be brief. As we've seen during Santiago's previous presentation, Visit Tampa Bay really has done an incredible job in crushing it with room nights, which is far above and beyond the pre-pandemic numbers that we were experiencing. I think it's important to point out, and Ron mentioned this, and so did Commissioner Owen, we originally, our staff, thanks to Ron's leadership, recommended, and this Board approved, a very conservative budget going into the pandemic because we were so concerned about, you know, the impact it was going to have on us. And as we've seen, not only have they come out of it strong, but, you know, they're absolutely killing it, and this was funding. And this was funding, the way it was explained to me, that would have previously been recommended and approved had we not gone through the pandemic. Now, all that being said, I've never believed that it was, we were statutorily required to approve the funding. I think it's a prudent investment. The TDC, I think it's important to point out the TDC unanimously recommended it to this board. Again, we're not required to follow their recommendations, although typically we do. And the last thing I'd point out is, as was mentioned, the TDC funds with very limited uses. It's not like we can use it for fire rescue or law enforcement or things like that. From time to time, we'll hear from folks saying, why don't you use that money for X or Y? And it's very, you know, statutorily limited on the uses that we can use. So I think it's a prudent investment, and I'll definitely support the motion. Commissioner Owen, in the comment.
I don't know if you second.
Let's not take, yes, Commissioner Kemp.
And I guess when I was speaking statutorily to Mr. Chairman, we have to contract a third party like Visit Tampa to administer this. And that's, I think that's what I was referencing. So forgive me if I misspoke on that, but is that's correct, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Okay, we got a motion to approve, Commissioner Owen, Second Commissioner Kemp. No other comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Next item.
Thank you. The next item are board appointments. And Ms. Finley will take you through those board appointments.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have several boards to make appointments to. Your first board is your Code Enforcement Special Magistrate. Please choose two, Commissioner Hagan.
Two and three.
Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Cameron Sapita. Two and three. Commissioner Cohen.
Two and three.
Commissioner Owen.
One and three.
Commissioner Kemp.
Two and three.
Commissioner Wostel.
One and three.
It will be Brian Lawrenson. So one and three? Okay, it will be Brian Lawrenson and Eric Challenger. So we're going to remove Eric from the Code Enforcement Board since he was just appointed as a magistrate. The next board is County Internal Audit Committee. Please choose one, Commissioner Hagan.
Six.
Commissioner Myers.
Eight.
Commissioner Cameron Sapita. Six. Commissioner Cohen.
Six.
Commissioner Owen.
Eight.
Commissioner Kemp.
Eight.
Commissioner Wostel.
Six.
It will be Gina DeAngelo. Your next board is your Hospital Authority. Please choose two, Commissioner Hagan.
Twelve and thirteen.
Commissioner Myers.
Eleven and thirteen.
Commissioner Cameron Sapita. Commissioner Cohen.
Eleven and twelve.
Commissioner Owen.
DeCampos is on something else, right?
He was on, he didn't get appointed. He applied to County Internal Audit.
All right, eleven and twelve.
Commissioner Kemp.
Twelve and thirteen.
Commissioner Wostel.
Eleven and seven.
It will be Darby Craddock and Gotham Krishmer.
Number twelve.
Sorry, number twelve, Copali. So for the Human Relations Boards, both of these applicants will be appointed, Susan Cannon and Neil Carball, since they were not appointed to another board. Land Use Appeals Board, there's two positions that are vacant.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
I would like to make a motion on this one particularly. I'm going to support number two. I think it's really important for folks that apply to these boards that they actually attend and that they show up. I know people are busy, and sometimes they can't and they get on these boards. But I have looked at the past record of the other applicant, and there was, they just didn't show up. So I would like to make a motion for you to republish, if possible, re-advertise, excuse me, for the second one.
Second.
We have a motion to re-advertise. This is for Land Use Appeals Board. And that was a motion by Commissioner Owen, Second Commissioner Wostel. And I'll just say that it's not unprecedented that we've re-advertized. And in the past, we've done that several times when we didn't have more applicants. It wasn't that we were questioning, we just didn't have enough to choose from. So this is certainly not unprecedented, and I'll support it. Any other comments? Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
So Haley Kennedy will be appointed to the Land Use Appeals Board, and I'll advertise the second position. Your next board is your Diversity Advisory Council, and it's actually no voting required. I put it on the regular agenda because it was pulled from December 7th to give the new commissioners time to just look over. So it will be Cynthia Cook, Natalie Lipscomb, and Anita Pickett. And then your last board is your Public Library Board. The individuals, the nominees that are on the list were appointed before the redistricting. So the Public Library Board's asking that these four individuals remain on the board until their expired term in their new districts. And there's other positions that I will need to re-advertize that don't have applicants, that don't have any members. So I have to re-advertize those positions, but they would like these people to remain if it's the pleasure of the board.
Is that acceptable?
So moved. Do we need a motion?
Okay, we have a motion to retain these four board members by Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Cohen. No comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And then if we can have a motion to confirm.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Next item.
Thank you. The next item is Item F2, which is Commissioner Myers' item regarding the sponsorship for the 2023 Annual Imperial Convention.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The local chapter, Harem Temple Number 23, is hosting their national organization here in Tampa, August 17 through the 25th. The economic impact to our county and city, $14.5 million, expecting 20,000 attendees. All hotels in the downtown area have been sold out, and Visit Tampa Bay are now looking at hotels in the west shore area. This organization will be coming back to Tampa in 2026. So it's something about Tampa they really love to continue to make an economic impact to our community. So with that being said, I'm going to move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Kemp. And I'll just say that working with, or being on the Visit Tampa Bay Board for years, I can tell you it's the reality of the business or the industry, these larger conventions, whether it's Visit Tampa Bay or Sports Commission, the competition is so intense that you really do have to incentivize. But as you can tell by the numbers that Commissioner Myers described as far as the economic impact, it is a worthwhile investment. And the other comment I'll make, many, many years ago, I went with Visit Tampa Bay, we were recruiting. I don't think it was the same temple, but it was a Shriner's convention and went to Baltimore. I can tell you that's the largest audience I've ever spoken in front of. I want to say there was 10,000 people in their convention room during that convention. So I can tell just from that experience alone that it's going to be well-attended and the impact will be extraordinary. So if no other comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner Wostel, let it know.
Thank you. Next item.
Thank you. The next item was Commissioner Owen's item. This is Item F3 regarding traffic studies.
Commissioner Owen.
Yes, and I have a few in a row here. May I? So I know at our last meeting, some other Commissioners echoed concerns. And I have real concerns with these traffic studies that get provided to us and to the zoning hearing master because I think a lot of them take into account a total 24-hour period. And I think it could be a little misleading to the board, maybe unintentional. For example, you know, I don't care what happens in traffic from midnight to 5:00 a.m. What I care about is the mom trying to drop her kid off at school in the morning, drop one off at daycare and get to work on time, and then trying to get home on time. So I'm really concerned more so with peak hours. The example I'm just giving is the apartment complex we discussed last time versus a hospital. So I know, like I said, a couple other Commissioners echoed some concern about that. I'm going to kind of change my motion here from a workshop. I don't know if that would actually be necessary. So what I would like to do is direct staff to bring to the board a report regarding these traffic studies provided to the BOCC Planning Commission and the zoning hearing master as it relates to the average annual daily trips, AM versus PM and versus the peak hours. I would just like some type of direction on how we are approving these or how a developer can come up here and just state, hey, traffic's going to be better with this particular development. Well, that's kind of a general statement, and I would like to be really specific to peak hours. So that's the gist of my motion here today.
Okay, we got a motion for staff to come back with a report on this issue by Commissioner Owen. Do you have a second? I'll pass the gavel to the vice chair, and I'll second the motion. I welcome the discussion. It's one that frankly, I don't think we've ever had. Honestly, I'm unclear if it will go anywhere, but I certainly welcome having the discussion and exploring any way that we can make the system and the process better. Was a little unsure about having a workshop. I told Bonnie when we had our briefing that if we're going to go that route, I wanted to couple it with a couple other items because I'm not sure it warrant to have, you know, an entire workshop for it. But I certainly support having the discussion and seeing where it goes and if we can possibly improve the process and the numbers that were provided. So that's why I'm happy to second the motion. Commissioner Kemp, you're next. I don't know if you can see it.
I'll support it. I just, there's a couple of things. One is that when we do get our reports, now we do get peak hours every time. They're always included. They're done by, the developer hires the person who does the report. I know that they have a different protocol, and I've raised that before. In Sarasota at least, and maybe some other places, we're part of what the, when they, it's included in the fee, the fee is larger, to have an independent study done by the county. However, I've been told that that is a time barrier of some sort. I don't know. I think this could be discussed. I thought originally you were going to put it as part, you know, I know we're having an upcoming workshop on some items. You know, I always thought that the suggestion was to put it on there more broadly as being one of the land use kinds of things that we get subject to. And I do, I do see some issues and some misunderstandings, I think, with regards to the traffic studies that I won't talk about now. But I guess this was a way to, I mean, it could have been on future discussion too, just to, you know, then you don't have, we don't have to talk about it, it just gets done until we get it back. But I'll support it. And I just wanted to point out that we do, every single time, there's always a peak trip analysis.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you. If my recollection is correct, one of the issues that led to this coming up is that sometimes it's not clear what we're dealing with. And if you, if you have a proposal for, and I'm just going to make an example, a new apartment complex, and you're told that the traffic counts are going to be reduced, that doesn't really make any sense because if you're putting a new apartment complex in, of course, there's going to be more traffic. But it's being reduced from probably whatever's already approved. And I think that that's the piece of it that sometimes gets lost in the conversation is that the representation isn't, it sounds like the representation that's being made is that there's going to be less traffic. It's really less traffic than some other alternative use. And I guess where I'm going with this is that I think what's most important is that we know what we're looking at when we get a traffic study, that we understand what the parameters are of what it's covering and what it's trying to say. And if I remember, I think it was Commissioner Kemp, but I'm not sure, made the comment that sometimes the language around the traffic studies gets a little loosey-goosey in terms of what is actually being represented. And I think as part of this, it's important that we all have an understanding of exactly what we're looking at so we can evaluate it, you know, appropriately.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you, Chair. I had mentally seconded it. I just forgot to actually say it, so I apologize for that. On the floor.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Owen and seconded by Commissioner Hagan. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Commissioner Owen, you're up.
Yeah, my next item has to do with creating a Valrico community plan. I've noticed at the last few board meetings, even ones that I wasn't a Commissioner on, some developments take place in Valrico, and they reference the Brandon community plan over and over and over. And sometimes it's just been missed. Commissioner Myers, we share some parts of Brandon, but I have all of Valrico. And I can tell you, my folks in Brandon and Valrico, it's a totally different lifestyle. Brandon is more of an urban setting, for sure. Valrico is a rural community that abuts all of our agriculture, from Plant City all the way down to South County. And I'm just noticing that a lot of these Valrico future developments are being referred to, well, this is what they do in Brandon, or even referencing the Garden District. I believe that Valrico deserves their own community plan because, like I said, it's a much different community than Brandon. Like I said, you're, the Brandon folks are closer to the 75. There's a lot more density, a lot more apartment living. But as you get out to Valrico, you're getting close to the edge of the urban service area. So I think the folks of Valrico deserve to have their community plan, and that's why my motion is for staff to begin the process and complete a Valrico community plan.
Okay, we have our motion by Commissioner Owen, Second Commissioner Kemp. Do we have any comments on the motion?
I do have a question. What are the next steps? Anyone know?
I was looking for Adam, but I think he's not here. So we'll work with Adam. Oh, he's online. There we go.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry for not being down in the boardroom. Mistake coming upstairs. So the next steps would be, we'd bring back a report to the board that would include steps to be taking for public steps to be taken for public engagement and timelines associated with that. There is a, a community planning guide that has been used to, to structure the community planning efforts, so that would be consistent with what the board is looking for, a timeline with, with, with public engagement to start the process. And the public engagement is to ensure that we're getting a wide, opportunities for wide participation in the community, and, and that all voices have the opportunity to be, to be heard as part of that.
All right, thank you. I just want to, I mean, I've gone through dozens of these in, in my time here, and I just want to say from experience, I know that you, you always begin the process with the, the best intentions, but if there's any way that the process can be improved upon, because inherently what happens is, it, it takes a couple years, you start out with probably 100 people that are genuinely interested and want to improve their community, and throughout the process, everyone gets weeded out, and at the very end, you got five people writing a plan for entire community. And it ends up, unfortunately, having a lot of unintended consequences. So I don't know, I don't, I certainly don't have the answer, but if there's any way that that process can be improved upon, I think would make a better product at the, at the end of it, because I can just tell you, it, it's a challenging endeavor, and I know it's, it's worthwhile, and the intentions are honorable, but there can be challenges. So whatever staff can do, I don't know if it's our staff, or Planning Commission, or whoever's involved, if we can somehow improve that process, I think it would result in a better product at the end of the day. Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you. I don't disagree with you. I'll just say that I have been through community planning processes, actually at Apollo Beach, Town and Country, Roskin, and some other communities, one or two times over time. And it, I just, when I was an aide to Commissioner Castor in District One, and I got quite involved in them, and I will say that there are some communities that, especially at the beginning of the process, because I understand that Keystone as well, kept very tight and very much over the process. They do seem to drag on too long, and there seems to be too much engagement from people that actually don't live in the community and don't own property in the community that are eventually sway and over the plan and discouraged, you know, residents. But I think it's a, a healthy, really good way for people to get engaged, but I, I do think there are, are issues about it, and I'll just, in, in terms of the, the community almost being swarmed for, you know, the, the core people there are, are not necessarily supportive of. I don't know what to do about that, but I do think it's healthy to get some, to get input and review, and to start to find out where the community is. And also, for a lot of areas, even now, the community plans were done back in 2003 to 2006, and, you know, lots has changed. And of course, Valrico has grown, and there's a different kind of pressure on that area. So I, I think it'll be a, a good exercise, but I just, and, and good for people there. But I, you know, I could see where definitely there should be some, maybe, I, I'm not sure what, I'm not a planning expert, but some, some other things that could be considered to, to bring it in, in a, in a shorter time period, and, you know, to, to keep that community engagement going.
Agreed. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Owen, second, was that Commissioner Kemp? Did you second that?
Yes.
Okay. If no other comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
The final item of our future discussion items.
Any future issues? Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you, Chair. Actually, I have to make sure you don't have access to my personal notes, because the exact words I was going to use for this are unintended consequences, so I'll have my aides look into that. I'm going to request that staff provide a comprehensive analysis and report that demonstrates the historical compounding impact of nonprofit organizations within the general funds and on the budget. I, I'll, I'll leave a lot of the specific parameters. I welcome that report to provide options and parameters on how to better navigate this unintended consequence and growing beast that I believe is having on our, our budget. Do you need any more details from me on that, Bonnie?
I think I understand the comprehensive report on the number of nonprofits and the history of those nonprofits over time, specifically relating to the general funds.
That's correct. Thank you.
Commissioner Myers?
Well, I don't have a future item, but I have a thank you. And I'd like to thank this board, Bonnie York Administration, County Attorney Back, Janet Lawton, and all of the staff who participated in the MLK parade. I truly enjoyed myself in looking at all of the employees. We had plenty of fun. It was a fun day for us, the weather was nice, and so just thank you for taking time and participate in the parade with me as, serving as the grand marshal.
And during this time, we don't have discussion, we just, you know, have future items that we direct the county administrator to bring back, but I just want to say thank you, Commissioner Myers, for your leadership and making that happen. Commissioner Owen?
Yes, my future item relates to the issues surrounding Pine Island, and I know that that, that's coming up here pretty soon again. I'm a little confused why it's coming back to us, it looks like in the same capacity it was before the board before, but okay. But I have real concerns about, and I'll just say for the record, I'm one that I think the CPA and the rezone should be done together on this one, for sure. I am not for creating a whole new land use district for, for the islands surrounding Hillsborough County. That being said, there may be something that we can do on this particular island, but my big issue is public safety. You know, this, this particular island, I, and I'll be, we, we've always called it something else, it's not known as Pine Island, it's known as Beer Can Island, and in my twenties, I've sowed my oats there, if I'm being honest with you. And I think it's a neat place for, for boaters from Apollo Beach and the surrounding community to have fun. But I want this to be, my, my hope is, this is just for one specific island, if we approve it at all. But secondly, the public safety component's so important. I don't know if the, there's even EMT that's available on these boats. If, if they're not, we're going to need them, right? And that's $100,000 to the taxpayers. Will Sheriff Cronister have to require more patrolling around there? Do they need some type of fire lanes in there, if there's some type of structure? Before we get to the CPA, and before we get to the rezoning, we have got to have some type of comments from Sheriff and Fire as to what impact this is going to be to public safety, because I can tell you what's going to happen. That first week or second week, someone's going to get dehydrated on the island from having too much fun, someone's going to slip and fall, get hurt, and they're going to have, you have to be transported over to TGH. So do, do we have those mechanisms in place? And if we don't, what are the costs to the taxpayers in order to do that? So just to make it simple, I would like a report brought to the land use meeting, to the next land use meeting, to include direction and the impact on public safety.
Bonnie, you good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
And then lastly, I want to say the same thing, I know we're not supposed, but Commissioner Myers, thank you again. She actually came to the Martin Luther King Day Parade in Plant City, which is outside of her district. Those are my folks. I just want you to know, it was very notice, you handled yourself with dignity class and really represented this board in Hillsborough County well.
All right, great. No other comments? We're adjourned.